Thank you, sir. Please join me in a word of prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for your mercy, your grace. Father, we just continue to lift up the United States of America. Father, we just thank you for each and every one, Lord God, that's in this room, Lord God. We just continue to pray for your peace, your love, your joy, your guidance, Lord God, as, Lord God, we try to make the decisions, correct decisions concerning your people. Lord God, be with our military, Lord God, our law enforcement officers, our first responders, Lord God. Father, just continue, Lord God, to bless this nation. Continue, Lord God, to bless this county. We thank you for this wonderful county that we live in, Lord. Father, we just pray, Lord, that you be with us all, be with our families. We give you praise, glory, and honor, in Christ's name we pray. Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to the Board of County Commissioners meeting, August 26, 2025. If you would like to come before the board, please make sure you fill out the form located by Ms. Rhodes. Once you come before the board, please make sure you state your name, address for the record, please. Also, when you come before the board, if you're representing yourself, you get three minutes. If you're representing a group, you get five minutes. Once the buzzer goes off, that means that is your time. It's up to the board to extend your time. And if the board decides to extend your time, if you had three minutes, you get three additional minutes. If you have five, you get an additional five minutes. So at this time, we'll move right into the consent agenda. Before we go to the consent agenda, if you have cell phones, please silence your cell phones. We don't want any cell phones going off during the meeting, please. And also, that also goes for our staff members. Please silence your cell phones. We don't want them going off, please. All right, at the, we're moving right into the consent agenda. This is where three votes covers, where it covers multiple items. Well, one vote covers multiple items. Is there anyone in the public with any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? Anybody? Questions or concerns? Any staff members, any questions or concerns with the consent? Board members, any questions or concerns with the consent?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on page three due to work on the project.
Are there any other board members with any questions or concerns about the consent agenda? If there being no other questions, accept the motion to accept the consent agenda as printed.
Make a motion.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner McElmore.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Pridger. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed four and oh, but one abstention. All right, moving on down to, do we want to do the bid opening real quick?
If we could, just skip on down to.
Skip to it?
Yeah, please.
All right, we'll go right to you then.
Mr. Chairman, if we could skip to nine, I think we're ready to, for y'all to vote on closing the bond.
All right, Rudy Finances.
If you want to come up, you can recognize your guests.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good afternoon. We have Jeremy Neefeld and is here on behalf of PFM. And we had just gone, met with him for a better part of the last hour, and we have a resolution prepared for the commission's consideration today. I don't know if, Jeremy, you wanted to give any overall comments before I read the resolution?
Sure, yeah. I think y'all have had a good debrief on what the process was. We ran a competitive process. Y'all received several competitive bids. So this will look to finalize the transaction and close on Thursday of this week. Happy answering any specific questions that you would have on the resolution, but that's what we're here to do.
Jeremy, just state your name and who you represent for the.
Sure. Jeremy Neefeld with PFM, Managing Director, and we are the, we are the financial advisor to the county.
Thanks, sir. Commissioners, y'all got any questions for Jeremy? All right, Mr. Norbert.
Mr. Chairman, just want to thank Jeremy. We engaged him in the spring with following Mr. Mushton from Neighbors Giblin. I want to thank Alex, who's here, I think, in the audience as well, before he heads out to Bay County. But I want to thank them, both from PFM and from Neighbors Giblin, for their assistance in this process, and Ms. Norris and the staff in her office, as well as Sheri and the county administrative staff. We have this now all done, and I have a resolution. I'll read by title unless there's any objection.
No, sir. Read.
Thank you, sir. It's a resolution to board of county commissioners of Gulf County authorizing issuance by the county of not exceeding $19 million in aggregate principal amount of its gas tax revenue and refunding note Series 2025A and taxable gas tax revenue refunding note Series 2025B in order to provide funds for the purposes of financing the costs of certain transportation improvements within the county refunding the gas, county's gas tax revenue bonds Series 2015A and taxable gas tax revenue refunding bonds Series 2015B, and to pay the cost of the issuance of such notes, authorizing award of the sale of the notes upon compliance with certain parameters, authorizing the execution and delivery of the form of the attached loan agreement between the county and the purchaser of the notes, pledging the money received by the county from the county's constitutional gas tax, local option gas tax, and the county gas tax to secure payment of the principal of the interest of said notes, authorizing the execution and delivery of an escrow deposit agreement, providing for the repeal of inconsistent provisions, and providing for the severability and providing for an effective date. It's set up for Mr. Chairman Quinn's signature with the approving vote of this commission.
All right, thanks, sir. Any questions, Commissioners?
Only thing is, great work. Let me ask you a question on the procedure after this. This is all good. Were we, 19 million, we're going to have, we're going to get our priority list up going forward. We close on this on Thursday. Is there a way we can track, just say the projects this pays for down the road, you know, after we, after we do it? Like, we know what we're going to do in our respective districts? Let me tell you where I'm going with this. When you do a tax like that, it's good to know, let the citizens know that we're, hey, that road was funded off this. You know what I'm talking about, Commissioners? You know, so it says that this, what we just passed, is going to fund that particular road and stuff like that. Is that something that, I was, a lot of times, we've done taxes before in other places as well. You see it that this was paid for out of that tax. Does that sound like something we can do or a good idea? Just throwing it out. Just have to be careful.
Be careful now. If we do something now, because we don't know what diesel fuel is going to do a year from now when this is actually getting done. So I would be very hesitant about.
No, I didn't say now. I just said, as we track it, we say down the road, this is what this paid for. This is not an immediate thing. This is like, as we go forward with that, these are our priorities, and if we get it done, hey, this was, that was what I was talking about. Not like next week. Just a thought. Is that good?
So you saying that once we, so once we get, we secure the funding, you saying, so if we pay, let's say we pay Highway 71, you saying that, hey, this money will?
Yeah, just somewhere it's noted in our, that we noted somewhere that this was paid for out of this tax. Because that way, when we come back and, next time, I won't be here, but next time they go for this, it'll say, hey, these are the roads that you paid last time, and it'll help future commissions do it. So that was why I was, just throwing it out there, that we track this. Hey, this is what it paid for last time, coming back to you. It's not to do with you, I'm sorry, but this was for us.
We can do a running list, and at the end, we can say, okay, this was, we had $9 million. This is how it was spent, broken down. This was engineering. This was this road right on down. This was this culvert project, whatever. Yeah, it will not be a problem to track.
Could we get some before and after pictures? That'd be.
That'd be, I mean, it's just a historical thing is what it was going for. I mean, you've seen this before when you're doing it beforehand in other places. And it makes good when you go to do it the next time.
All right, any more questions concerned? I also wish this is a board on this resolution.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Macron to approve it.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner McElmore. Any further board discussion? All right. Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right, any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed five and oh. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Jeremy, thank you. Go ahead. Just, Commissioners, you have two resolutions, or I apologize, two ordinances. One is a first reading this today on your ninth cent, and you have final adoptions on September 23rd on your sixth and your ninth cent, and they have been noticed and advertised, and they'll be adopted per the DORs and guidelines and our bond council's recommendations. So those are to tie up the loose ends on this, just to let you know, those will be done.
All right, thanks, sir.
The last thing on this before Alex leaves, on G and H in my packet, I believe it starts on page eight. These are the two interlocals, one to go to the city of Port St. Joe, one to go to the city of Weewall. I need you to approve, me to transmit those to the two cities.
Any questions on these, on these interlocal agreements, Commissioners?
No, sir. I'll make a motion to transmit these to the respective cities.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Husband.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Macron. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passed five and oh.
Thank you, guys.
Commissioner Macron.
If we could skip down, the warden's here, and I think he, he's not going to promise us five new crews, but I think, I think he's going to give us some good news.
Come on up, Warden, introduce yourself.
Hi, good afternoon. Michael Pavis, Warden at Gulf Correctional Institution, 500 Oakstill Road in Weewall. Just wanted to provide a quick update. I haven't been here for the last few meetings, and I apologize for that. Just wanted to provide a quick update this morning. As of this morning, we were 89,351 inmates in the state of Florida. At Gulf Seagull, we were 1,538 at the main unit and 270 at the annex. And we're creeping along in the right direction, as promised last year. We were actually able to provide an additional work squad to the county, and as long as we keep moving in this direction, and it's really, really driven by, not only our inmate population at the annex, is actually driven by our staffing levels. So as our staffing levels continue to increase, and we've got a pretty good applicant flow going, we'll, we will be able to put the correct caliber of offender at that unit in order to hopefully provide a additional work squad to turn it back to where it was pre Hurricane Michael, where a commissioner has a work squad in each of their districts. So just wanted to provide a quick update, and I can't talk a lot about, you know, we've got a public affairs department or what have you, but if I can answer any questions, then I certainly will.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for the Warden?
I just want to say thank you for the additional work squad. I know that you're trying, because I talked to my supervisor this morning. He had four today and two yesterday, so I know it's just getting better slowly but surely, but thank you very much. It's a huge, huge help for us.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Warden, I want to say thank you. If there's something we can do on this side, all you got to do is call us.
I know your number.
We appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Hold for you.
I'm sorry.
You'll be a hero if each commissioner gets a work squad. I want to tell you that. You will be a hero in this county, okay?
Yes, sir.
And I want to put a plug in for, I know you're trying to hire. What you're paying, and I hope they're getting raises this year, because it is part of what our legislative platform is. Mr. McKnight will shake his head on that one, too. We are fighting for you as a county to get that rate up there, but I think on some of the PR stuff, there, it's a, if that's your calling, they take care of you well. If you're willing to work, get started, and you will make your pay go up, you'll have a good retirement, you'll have a good benefits. Department of Corrections is a great employer, so I just want to throw that plug out there. So I hope that anything we can do to help that lines, I mean, it's a good gig. And, I mean, you've obviously done it, and you're spokesman for it as well, so just thank you. And like I said, you will be a hero if you get them.
Yeah, we appreciate you, Warden.
Yes, sir. That's the direction we're headed, so.
Yeah, so we remember every time, like I said, we remember before Michael, when we all had a work crew in it, and man, it was, oh, yeah, just pick up the phone. They was working hard, so. And then we remember after Michael, we were struggling, but we appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing.
I just, I just appreciate the patience, and I'm glad we've been able, because I remember last year, whenever I, whenever I took over, then I made a promise, and I haven't been able to deliver all of it, but I'm glad we were finally able to deliver on some of it, and we're going, we're going to get there, I promise.
We appreciate it. Thanks, sir. Thank you for coming.
One more thing, because when we were in Tallahassee, we got to meet with the secretary a couple months ago, anyway, and so we threw out an idea, and so we're going to back that up. So we're going to run sewer to the, to the work camp to make sure that that is an option to open when you get the staffing levels, because that will solve our problem long term. But we know that's years down the road, but we're working toward that, where we'll be in a position where that will not be an impediment to opening that back up.
Sounds good. Yes, sir.
All right, thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thanks. So up to you. We can go to the bid opening, or we can take it from the top?
Yeah, let's get the bid opening out the way. Bid opening, item four, bid opening, number 2425-25, Henry Avenue. Madam Clerk?
Okay, yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, as you said, bid 2425-25, Henry Avenue, have four bidders, Dire Riddle Mills and Precourt, Gulf Coast Utility Contractors, Robertson Roberts Inc., American Sand and Asphalt Pavement.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll come back to it. All right. Mr. Armstrong?
We can take it from the top of the list. Austin's got a quick update. I'm not asking for any decision today, but just to let you know what we will be coming back with at the later, before the end of the year. That continues.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So at the transfer station, over the past several years.
Turn your, turn your mic on. It didn't come on.
Can you hear me?
Must be dead.
Is that better?
There we go.
Okay. So over the past several years, our tipping rates have stayed the same. Unfortunately, all of our expenses have continuously gone up. I was just looking, about three years ago, at Waste Management, it cost us 2681 per tonne to dispose of our material, and now it's up to 3108. And that was just a couple years ago. So ultimately, what we're asking for is to potentially increase the tipping by a small amount if we deem it necessary.
Any questions, Commissioners? I'm assuming it must be deemed necessary.
Well, again, I mean, this is, we try to run things like a business, and a business can't lose money consistently. And so this works, and it has worked because of flow. The more flow we have, the cheaper it is for everybody. The less flow, the more expensive. And because construction is down significantly, our building permits are down significantly, our flow's down. And again, our overhead is basically the same when you talk about our staffing. We got the same person at the scales. We got the same person pushing. We got the same watcher. The one thing that does fluctuate is our hauling cost and our tipping fee, but again, the only way we can keep ahead of the curve is to keep increasing our flow, and our flow is down, is down significantly from what it was for the last couple of years. Some of that was rebuilding after Hurricane Michael and just a regular thing. So we know that we're going to lose money at Weetapo, and it's not a substantial amount, but we can't afford to lose money at Five Points as well. So if things continue, I'll be coming back toward the end of the year and asking you for a 3% or 4% cola. And again, I don't think we've moved them since 2000, at least. It may be since, excuse me, 2020. Is that right? We haven't moved them since, since we took over from BCC? Okay, so we have not changed the rate since we took over from BCC. So that's a pretty good run, and I will tell you this without scaring you, I think our hauling cost is more than 50% increased from our original fee, and our tipping costs are up about 25%, I think, over that same period of time. We have a fixed cola for tipping. So again, we've been able to stay ahead of the curve because of flow, but when the flow slows down, our fixed costs are the same. Again, we got to adjust the rates. If we want to pay as we go, and this is just like anything else, it's a user fee. Water department needs to pay for itself. The solid waste needs to pay for itself. We'll have to adjust the cost.
If I could, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Construction is down, and it is steadily getting slower and slower, but if Michael and them could, get us something, I'd love to see the numbers, you know, something to look at, anyway. It'd be good for all of us. Get a breakdown on that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So just something you going to bring back?
Yes, this is just for information.
Okay, cool.
Also, when you do your scales, if you would show that projected loss, I think you got something maybe penciled in there. That'll help us out at the end. If this is, if we go this way, that loss is what we're going to be looking at, if you wouldn't mind it. Make it easy on.
I would like to add that we are looking at other options as far as, you know, cutting down our costs. Currently, we're paying to dispose of tires. I'm looking at trying to find somebody that could maybe recycle them and, you know, get them for free, so that would obviously be one cost savings for us. So there are options that I'm looking at outside of just increasing tipping potentially.
We appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Sylvie's got a positive update.
Hey, guys. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on tourism efforts. Year-to-date, the tourist development tax collections are up just under 4.5%. June this year set a new record, beating last year's all-time high for a single-month collection, so things are really strong. I heard from several business owners over the July 4th week saying that they had record sales for single days. So lots of folks are visiting, and a lot of our neighboring destinations are seeing some decline in visitors staying, like shorter stays, but in Gulf County, people are actually staying longer, so that's really great. Quickly, a couple of events that we have coming up. Our annual partner reception annual meeting is coming up. Tend to leave that scheduled for the afternoon of November 20th at the golf course. We would love for you guys to be there. It's a highlight of the year and just a chance for us to kind of celebrate tourism here. You guys know how busy our Parks and Rec crew is. Obviously, they're out, you know, keeping things maintained. In the first six months of this calendar year, they removed over 30 tonnes of trash from designated areas throughout the county, so doing a great job. And then lastly, at the golf course, Jordan and his team, obviously making steady improvements out there. If you haven't been to the public, I encourage you to stop out there. It looks really fantastic. We're planning a fun, grand reopening event there, September 18th, from 4:30 to 7:00. It should be super fun, so if everybody could come out. I think he's anticipating closing the fiscal year with around 24,000 rounds of golf being played, with half of those, nearly half of those being visitor rounds, so doing great things out there.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, any questions for Sylvie?
I promised her that's her last report she'll have to give as DDC. She's going to be changing, changing titles, so, but what a great one to go out on, so.
Yes, sir. You still got the floor?
Sheri has got item C.
Page two of your packet. When we were discussing legislative requests the other day, we missed this one, so I am requesting permission to include, it's the LESA, which is the law enforcement salary assistance to request an increase with that. We requested it last year. We got a little bit, not as much as we asked for, so we're going to ask for an increase again this year.
All right, I'm good with that, huh? I also wish this is a board.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Macron.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Husband. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this increase? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passed five and oh.
And with this, so last year, when we were lobbying for this, and we got a portion of it, there needs to be a universal fix, instead of going back each time. There were five or six, I can't remember, that were left out mainly in the Panhandle of county-run jails, that Jackson being one of them, that's closest to us, I believe. So we really need a fix for all, instead of each delegation having to do their own fix. So maybe we need to ask, in addition to this, ask FAC to include that in their, in their change.
Any motion on that?
It's good. I'll add it to what we've already done, if the board's good with that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good.
Sounds good.
Sheri's got the next one, too.
The next is page three. We receive the CEI services bid for Henry Avenue, and we are, staff's recommendation is to award Southeastern Consulting Engineering as the highest-ranked responder.
All right, any, any questions on this, Commissioners? All right, what's the wish of the board?
I'm making a motion.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner McElmore.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Pridger. Any further board discussion?
Mr. Macron abstaining due to a conflict.
Yes, sir. All right, anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed four and oh, but one abstention.
Page four through six, this is the proposed modification to the port's mortgage and adding the desire to work together on that, that academy. The Port Authority has not meant to approve this, but I believe we have an agreement with the, with the chairman. I recommend that we send this to them to be approved, and the board approve it.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Thank you for that. That is our academy land moving forward. Falling apart, falling to pieces. All the pieces are falling together, so I think it's a great thing. And I sure make the motion on that one.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Pridger.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Macron. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this one? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passed five and oh.
Next items, item F. This is from Don. This is a resolution for the deal track parking area. This, we have to renew every so often. This helps us with beach re-nourishment and parking issues at the Cape, so recommend y'all approve this resolution.
Any questions, Commissioners? I entertain a motion that we approve this resolution.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Macron.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Husband. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this resolution? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passed five and oh.
Page 14 through 16, that'll be item I. This is the interlocal with the city of Weewall. This may be Jeremy's best short and sweet. Recommend that we send this to the city for their consideration and approval.
All right, any questions, Commissioners? I entertain a motion we send the interlocal to the city of, say, the city of Weewall.
I made a motion.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner McElmore.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Husband. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public? Anyone in the public on this? Any opposition to that motion? All right, motion passed five and oh.
Item J, if y'all ready to talk about road paving, the list, the split, and moving forward.
All right, Commissioners?
I had talked about it before. Just not shooting myself in the foot, because a lot of the money that we've got has, they've actually paved a lot of roads in my district, especially on the beach, because we had a lot of Hurricane Michael money. If you look at the city of Highland View, St. Joe Beach, we got one little thing that didn't get done, but it's done a lot there. To say we're going to take it and split it evenly among five, I don't know if it's best for our whole county. So I think it's, in just my opinion, thinking out, just throwing it out there, if we do it, we put the, our priority list in there, and then we kind of like ride around, look at it and see, because some of them are going to be way worse than others. And I think we might need to look at a priority list that's the whole county while before we divide it up and into segments, say, hey, you get 250, 250, you know, like that kind of thing. I just think that might, that was my thought, because there has been a lot, and I do ride the whole county. I know y'all all do ride the whole county, but then we'll know where our priority list through wherever it is. So that was just a thought I had on going forward.
I was, I was thinking the same thing, Commissioner. Maybe put an American mile, 250, 350, for each commissioner, and then base them, rank them based on need. You know, that would be a way, a fair way to do it, in my opinion. So that's, that's one way. It's kind of a mixture of what you were saying, added to it with a ranking process. Clay or Mark could help us with the ranking on that. So if we start out with the same amount of money, get our, our initial needs fixed, and then see what's best for the county overall.
Oh, I mean, we definitely want to get, what's the bad roads is we definitely want to get them, you know?
Yeah.
I just think we need to come to an agreement, though. I mean, we could spend a ton of money on unpaid roads that's never been paid, and we could eat up a lot of money in a hurry. And we just need to figure out, you know, how far we can go down that, you know?
I think one thing we could maybe do is, if we could come up with those unpaid roads and see, maybe talk to DOT and see which ones can get on the five-year work program, and see if we can get that, because I'm with you on that. I've got a couple in mind that I'd love to get paid, but there's just no way to get them paid with the amount of money that we have. So that would basically eat up my entire amount of money if we, if we split it evenly, so. And they're not very long roads either, so that's, that's where I'm at with it. So I'm with you on that, Commissioner.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no issue. Like I say, if we're going to do it that way, I know I got my list. I hope you got my list. I sent my list, because, you know, my district is a city.
just put these roads on the list. When y'all get y'all cut the money from the money that we're going, if they sign the interlocal, the money that they're going to get. So I have no problem with that.
And one thing we could do too is we could think about lime rock in some of these unpaved roads. That way, we want to grade them once every three or four months and not doing the, because basically the lime rock's going to be about the same price as the asphalt. So if you lime rock and asphalt is basically going to be twice the price. So if we just did some of that on some of those grades, it might be worth in some areas, if District One had one at the very northeastern part of the county and the motor grader mainly stayed at the over street area, for instance, that's a long way to go and a lot of extra money to pay for that one road. So I think it's, they're all going to be a little bit different.
I was thinking too along that line, like some of the dirt roads that we probably won't be able to afford to pave, like in Howard Creek area. If we, we found some way to do where the asphalt meets the road right there, that's usually where we've had most of our problems going in about 15 feet. And then the road kind of gets gutter. So it's like the runoff hits there and it makes gullies right there. There's some way to shore up when we do, you'll know more about this than I will. If we could shore up those little entrances to those streets, those side streets, it would make a huge difference without having to repave that whole road.
And I don't want to speak for Mark here, but that might be something that we can do in-house here shortly on those intersections.
That's true.
That'll help a lot with the turn radius on those intersections right there.
Well, we're good. We got a plan?
We got, we got to have a plan. Y'all tell us. Because where we're at now is we, we need to, to cut the engineers loose because y'all are going to be wanting to pave roads and we're not going to have them designed. So we, we need to, we need to get to the next step of where we're going to go if we can.
Can, can we have a master list and, you know, is that a good idea to get a master list of whatever's through the county and then take a little time to go look? Or, I mean, that's, I don't, I don't know every street that you got on yours. You probably don't know every street that I have on mine. And if we have time to do it and then we can double check back with Mark. Mark, tell me about this one. I mean, because y'all ride those streets every day, Public Works does. So I just, what if we had a master list? This is, this is what we're going and prioritize it by section. And then, is that what you're talking about?
What if we, what if we did a numeric amount, say 250, 300,000 apiece? And then we rank, let Mark and Clay rank them on, of all of our lists combined?
It's fine with me.
Okay. All right. I'll, I'll make the motion to, to do 300,000 apiece in each respective district. And then the rest of the money will be ranked by our Public Works Director and County Administration Staff.
All right. Got a motion by Commissioner husband?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Macklemore. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passed five and oh. Thank you, sir.
So if we could do this, if, if each, since now we've got some numbers. So in rough terms, you're going to have, we're going to have, the county's portion is about 6.2 million. So you're going to split 1.5. So the other pot will be left for the, for the extra road. If y'all will prioritize, what do you think? And Clay can help with this on, on your 300. And then turn in your wish list for the other roads. We'll get to, to work it on ranking. Some of them's going to be common sense. The question's going to be, do you pave a dirt road that's a mile long and they got one person living on it? I mean, that's the, that's the, so, so we'll come up with a logical ranking deal. But the sooner, some of you've already turned in the list, the sooner you get us those, we can tell. Because we don't want to design $10 million worth of roads when we've only got $6 million to do. So we'll, we'll try to make this go quick. Because on new construction, we're going to have to survey and then that's going to take time as well. So, so what is a good time for y'all to have us a final first round list?
September, October. I know we have some, I know I have one that we've actually put in for, for the DOT. So if that gets funded, then my list will change dramatically. So just to make sure we take care of, of that one really, really bad road. So those, that'll come out in September, October, you think? This year? It should be early.
It's usually towards Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I think it's going to be a little earlier this year. Say a month.
So by the next board meeting, is that good?
Sound good.
Is that going to give us enough time? I mean, you did it before then. I got mine now.
Early bird gets the worm.
There you go.
If, if you could do your 300 immediately, we can go ahead and get that going. And that, that'll be, that'll be easy. And then, and then again, we certainly want to take advantage of the state for anything we can, based on these big ticket items. Because like I said, you can spend mostly the money on, on one big ticket item. If you already know what your list is, turn it in.
Can I ask a question? It's naive of my part, but stripe, I've got some stripe to do on a county road that we have and it's a little, it's pretty substantial. Can that be paid for out of this one?
Yes, anything in the right of way.
Make sure that, okay.
Oh, we're good.
Next, next meeting. Date for the fire chief meeting with the board?
All right. So what's the board, when we want to have that, that meeting?
Is this, is this the meeting? Tell me, tell me more, a little bit more. This is for all the fire chiefs and all the board members?
Fire chief and the board to talk about potential changes to the, to the, to the program.
Okay. I'm ready whenever. Soon, always sooner the better on that one. How's y'all September?
When we're going to do, when we want to do it? We going to do it in the, in the morning? We want to do it in the evening?
Probably in the evening.
Evening's fine.
Matt, you want to come up? Yeah, I, I love morning, but, but all these fire chiefs have jobs. So they, they probably going to have to.
Be what's convenient for them.
And I don't know if y'all want to do it at White City. We did the last one at EOC, but we'd certainly host it at White City if we need to. But thoughts?
It needs to be in the evening time.
Okay.
Couple of them are retired, but we probably need to give them as much notice as we can too, if we want full participation.
What, what time you, you suggest?
If we do seven Eastern, then that's six Weewall time. So that gives, if somebody gets off work at five an hour to get there, if we do it in White City.
What day are you thinking? I mean, what, I mean, I'm flexible.
I think if you don't want to interfere with their normal fire department business, it needs to be a day other than Monday or Tuesday.
Not a Wednesday.
Not a Wednesday.
Not a Friday.
There we go. Thursday it is.
Thursday it is.
So Stone Mill Creek meets on Tuesdays.
But if it's every Tuesday?
Once a month.
Yeah. So I think we'd be all right. They, they could delight. But Matt, can, can we email you data sets that we want before this meeting and topics that you, we want you to possibly touch on?
Yes, sir.
I know we want to talk about some dispatch and some, and some calls and stuff. And you'll have the numbers on how much we spent on the incentive plans and all that stuff.
You tell, you tell me what to have and we'll have it.
Okay.
So Tuesday, we looking at Tuesday or Thursday next month? Seven o'clock?
It can't be the 16th and it can't be the 18th.
So you're talking about the ninth, the 11th? We don't want to do it next week. Ninth, 11th. Can't do it on the 20th. I mean, can do it on the 23rd, but, or the 25th.
23rd, 25th would be good. That'd give us time to get some.
Give them time to get their stuff.
Yeah.
Let them suffer through a meeting.
25th.
25th?
25th.
I think it's a wonderful day because I'm on vacation. So that's.
25.
Clay can handle it, he said.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Seven o'clock? Sounds good to me.
Seven o'clock at White City?
Good for White City.
Mr. Macklemore, you good at White City?
I'm good. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You good?
All right. Since I've asked you for a lot and we're going to do this in October anyway, you still think about the next one if you, if you don't want to go ahead and set an October date for EMS. Or you can go ahead and let we set it.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And, and I'd say this, let's call this a workshop.
Need a, we need a motion?
Well, since we'll have minutes, the clerk will attend and, you know, where all the commissioners can speak. If not, it's going to tie your hand. So let's just call it a workshop if that's good.
So I entertain the motion. We set the workshop, workshop for the fire chief meeting, seven o'clock Eastern, nine 25, 25.
I'll make the motion.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Pridger.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner husband. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on the fire chief's meeting? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passed five and oh. All right. EMS meeting, strategic plan.
That's you, Jody.
Y'all going to give us a date in October. We don't have to set it today, but if you know what it is, we go ahead and set that.
And just, that's, that's when we're going to talk about the, the number that you're getting, the, the rising number of calls and.
Yes, sir.
And the budget stuff. Because it's, they're off the chain. Yeah.
Jody, what'd you recommend? Evening, morning?
Work for you guys. You tell me, I'll make it happen. Either one's fine with me, sir.
You want to do it during the day, Jody? Or you want to do it? I mean, it's just, it'll just be whatever season for y'all.
We'll be flexible however we need to do it to accommodate you guys.
Yeah, it's about y'all on it in the day. I mean, because there's nobody that's got to be here.
Messes evenings up.
So I'm sorry. What you say?
The only ones we have to accommodate on this, this meeting is y'all. So it's, it's your convenience. Your staff's already here. So there's no problem having it in the morning.
Just tell me when to be there.
10:07. Is that good, Tuesday the 7th?
That's not a good day. Because we have VAB hearings on the 7th unless you do it at a different time. But they're really hard to predict how long those are going to take. The 7th and the 14th are your VAB hearings. Sorry.
All right. Glad you called it.
Yeah, we can do it on that Thursday.
Okay. Nine o'clock?
10:09.
Sound good to me.
So 10?
October the 9th at nine. Yeah.
Yep. October the 9th.
Nine Eastern.
Nine Eastern. October 9th at nine. All right. Entertainer motion that we set that EMS strategic plan on October 9th, 25 at 9:00 AM Eastern.
That's a workshop as well?
Workshop.
So moving, chair.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Macron.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Macklemore. All right. Any further discussion?
Yes, we'll hold it right here. Yes. All right. Anyone in the public on this? Any opposition to that motion? Motion passed five and oh.
Item M of Eglin update.
I don't know if anybody from Dunn's office is here. We reached out. Yes, come on up, please.
Do you want me to speak?
Yeah. I want you to tell us who got the gate open.
Tell us some good, tell us some good news.
She brought her fishing rod. She's going out.
We appreciate you coming.
Yeah. Just state your name and who you're representing for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Tammy Pritchard and I am representing Dr. Dunn's office. Thank you for having me. So this morning, Mr. Williams, Craig Williams, our district director, asked me to come down for the meeting. And the position that Dr. Dunn is on, it's a developing situation. So we're watching it and just waiting to see what's going to happen. He, he issued a formal statement this morning and it's, it was basically on his social media. Floridians are responsible stewards of our natural resources and should be able to enjoy the beautiful coastline as they have for many years. I am working with Eglin Air Force Base to reconsider its decision to restrict beach access in Gulf County.
Y'all got any questions, commissioners? Commissioner Macron?
I don't see what, you know, anymore we can do. Michael, you, I wish it was open tomorrow, but it's not. And we're trying several different avenues. And, and we appreciate, appreciate the efforts of Dr. Dunn. And like I said, I wish we could get it open tomorrow and we're, we're working every avenue we can. Michael, you want to?
Absolutely. And, and our position has not changed. We need it open immediately and then we'll talk long term going. So I think that's, that's the thing. So we appreciate Congress for Dunn's office, Senator Scott's office, Congressman Patronus's office have all been involved. So hopefully a coordinated effort to, to get it open and then, then we can talk long term going forward. So we appreciate you coming.
Yes.
And look, and look forward to a good response at some juncture in the near future.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. I don't have a price on Ian. Raymond's usually the bearer of really good news. He was the bearer of really bad news on Monday. So I need the board to let me fix this chiller and it may cost up to 100 grand. So it's emergency purchase. We think we've located one. We have two options. One's to repair, but again, that's, that's a short-term fix. Only half of it is out. So we're not totally dead. Nobody's dying of sweat in the courthouse facility. But anyway, you'll remember during COVID, we looked at replacing that system and it was going to be half a million dollars or whatever. But long-term, it would save money, but it was going to be a, a really big ordeal. This is the gift that keeps on giving. It's 1960 model technology that, you know, we, we control the air conditioning in the courthouse with hot water. And so thank God that the county commission put the roof on the courthouse about 15 years ago and it cut back a lot of the, of the need for the amount of water going through that chiller. But it's a, it's a, it's a dinosaur and half of it's broke. So.
What'd you lose? Compressor rings?
Three.
You can't lose just one. You got to lose three, huh?
THB failed. And it burned out three compressors.
Oh, believe it or not, Michael, this is the most efficient way to control the humidity and the.
We had, we had to study. I remember.
In, in that courthouse. There's not a better system that, that the refrigerant, variable refrigerant flow. They, they've had so much problem with those lately that they're not worth the, the option. But so we're looking at, you were looking at replacing the whole chiller or are you looking at replacing the compressors? What are you? Okay. Okay.
It, it's an either or. So it, at least half of it's got to be replaced anyway. So we, we're getting a price for both. But I'm leaning towards new. Yes. Yeah. And that, that's part of my decision would be.
Is that a 75 ton or you know?
70.
70.
We, even if we can get the parts to fix it for a lesser cost, it may not be timely.
What's the refrigerant?
410. Coming, the new one will be 454.
There's not much difference.
It's got about 70,000 hours running hours on the refrigerator.
Yeah, I think we got our money's worth, don't you? That's all I have.
That's, that's the toll on Michael. What it take to replace?
So to, to replace it, we're thinking in the ballpark of 100 grand. So I'm asking for patients to do it on an emergency basis if, if that turns out to be our best option.
Well, bottom line is they got to have air.
That's right. You won't, you won't be able to take the ladies hollering long if we don't.
Leanna, did you say something?
All right. What's, what's the?
What'd you say the turnaround is?
What brand are? York.
You getting quote on a York?
I would be looking for something. It won't be a drop end, but it'd be close.
Yeah. Yeah.
We just need a motion, Michael?
Yes, sir.
A motion?
Motion.
Because of, of emergency nature, to waive the bid policy and allow me to fix the problem.
You got that? You good with that?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Got a motion by Commissioner Pridger.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Macklemore. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public? We gotta keep those judges happy. Any opposition to the motion? Motion passed five and oh.
Jeremy's got O, P, and Q.
Chairman Commissioners, on page seventeen and twenty-one in your packet's from Michael, there's some resolutions, and I, I offer them to you both today. I'll summarize them real quickly, and I'll wrap this up with last week I reported to you all that we appeared before the fourteenth Judicial Circuit on a recent annexation challenge. And now going on for eight months, we've been going back and forth trying to encourage the city to work with us on annexation, proper notice, proper due process, follow the statutes, follow the law with regards to annexation, follow the law with regards to land use changes. Long story short, we're eight months into the first challenge. The court found for Gulf County issued them a summary judgment with the judge's ruling and an order, and set a hearing to be, a date to be set for damages for the city not following the conf- the interlocal agreement from two thousand thirteen. Clearly states in the interlocal that they would notify the county with regards to any annexation that they would attempt in the future. We told them they didn't do that. We went back and forth for seven months. It was clear as day that they didn't follow the interlocal, and the court agreed with us. Fast forward to what's in front of you now. They started a second annexation process two months ago. You instructed me to go to those meetings, which I've done in July and August. We've offered our letters of opposition to the second annexation in the middle of the industrial park, because it doesn't meet the statutory requirements for compactness and the same urban nature that meets all the properties around it. We went to those meetings, we opposed it. We actually had letters of opposition from the largest private employer in Gulf County, submit a letter to them, a three-page letter. And despite your opposition and request to meet with them again for dialogue and a workshop, despite the opposition letter received from the largest private employer in the county, they passed it on August fifth. We adopted two resolutions in the past month on ordinance six-one-eight, which is the annexation of this property, which is two and a half acres in the middle of the industrial park, and then six-one-nine, which is the land use change for the city of Port St. Joe. We adopted two resolutions in opposition to them. We submitted an opposition letter, and then on August thirteenth, we sent a certified letter with the attached resolutions to the city, letting them know we're following the statute, here are the resolutions. We're gonna set a date to all meet again like we did back in March, and we hope that you all, I'm sorry, in February, and we hope you all can attend. I received a response back to that from the city saying that they received our resolutions, they received our letter of opposition, but they were noting the statute for the five-day window in which to receive it. So unfortunately, I must report to you all that despite all your efforts the last eight months to try to expedite this, try to save time, try to save resources, try to get us all to some resolution on these issues, which is a dialogue, hopefully between the city and the county, we repeatedly are met with I'm looking for a good word for it. Nonessential opposition or objections. So the statute clearly states in one-six-four that the city and the county can reach an agreement for time extensions. We provided them on August thirteenth your resolutions. They said that you only had five days to give it to them, despite going for a month and a half and letting them know you're opposed to them. So what I've done today is I've prepared two resolutions, new resolutions. I've recited their opposition in their letter, and on page seventeen, and then on page twenty-one, you'll have two resolutions. I'm gonna ask you to adopt those resolutions today, and then following today's meeting, we're gonna hand-deliver new resolutions, and we're gonna send certified mail of your new resolutions to the city. We're gonna keep your conflict assessment meeting, and we'll move forward. And again, it's unfortunate that we have to keep doing this to get us to where we need to be to have this dialogue, but it's a necessary step under the statute. So I'd ask the Commissioners, page seventeen's a resolution of Board of County Commissioners authorizing and approving and directing administration to initiate conflict resolution under Florida statute one-sixty-four regarding the city of Port St. Joe ordinance six-one-eight. And if it's no objection, I'll read it. I've read it by title, and I have a recital there for the three pages. And I'd ask for your approval to have the chairman sign that, and then I will send that to the city this afternoon.
That's for, that's for both, correct?
That's for the first one, sir.
Okay. Now, any questions, Commissioners? All right, what's, what's the wish of the board?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I got a motion by Commissioner McCrone.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Husman. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this resolution? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passed five and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second one's a resolution of Board of County Commissioners Gulf County authorizing and approving and directing administration to initiate conflict resolution under Florida statute, chapter one-sixty-four regarding the city of Port St. Joe ordinance six-one-nine, which is their land use change they adopted on August fifth.
What's the wish of the board?
Chairman, is the second one, that's the one right across from Maritime Academy?
Yes, sir. Six-one-eight and six-one-nine are both the same parcels, Commissioner. The first ordinance they passed was to annex the property, and then simultaneous to that, they changed the land use. And if you recall, they said that there was no need for land use change because it's always been residential, yet their second ordinance changed it to induc- to residential. So it's just, it just keeps compounding. But this is the same track on both of these ordinances, sir.
And it's industrial now, correct? All right, what's the wishes of the board?
I'll make the motion.
All right, I got a motion by Commissioner Bridger.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Husman. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this one? Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, and again, I thank you, Commissioners. I apologize that we have to go through this. Again, these six pages are solely for you to have the opportunity to talk to them. And we'll do that, we'll notice it, and we hope they all can attend your conflict assessment before we move down to the next step of mediation, sir.
All right, yes, sir. I think you still have the floor.
I think Mark's got something on White City part.
Good afternoon. So on the District Three, White City boat ramp, I know that it's widely used from every district and people from abroad. We have dock issues out there everybody's aware of. We've removed some of the worst stuff. I just got a quote since we've been sitting in the meeting for piling removal and piling install, all in the same that, on stuff that we can't do, I mean, we don't have something to get out and replace the pylons, and the pylons are in terrible shape. The quote looks like it's gonna be about seventeen thousand five hundred for what we want, which is a four-inch steel piling in lieu of wood.
Is that that middle section?
So it's, it's the section that goes down the south side of the main head wall, up by where the fish cleaning, or the fish weigh-in station?
Yeah.
And then the one that runs parallel with the bridge that runs, that juts out into the water. All of that'll be replaced, or, or demoed and then replaced with floating dock. So, so this price that I'm giving you today is just for the guy to come in with the boat and remove the pylons and install the pylons that we're gonna need for the floating dock. We have about half of the floating dock ready, and we're gonna wait a little bit, and we'll get the part that juts out into the water. We, we have yet to buy that part.
And so add, I think everybody does know how busy that, that boat ramp is. So, and we talked about this the other day, is when, when they shut down the city boat ramp, they all went to White City. I mean, it was packed. And so what's gonna happen, and when they, when they lose some of their parking down there, which they obviously will when they, when the First Baptist Church starts going in there, that's gonna even compound this issue anymore. It's really used a lot, and it's those, those, I mean, we've seen those poles, they were rotten. So this, thank you for forgetting that and, and getting it expeditiously going forward, because it's a, it was a safety hazard, for sure.
I got a question. So you gonna replace the long sea wall, or you gonna go ahead and put the pylons out?
That's correct.
And then, and the floating dock will come later on that, right?
So while he's there, we'll go ahead and get the pylons that we need for the part that's gonna go out away from it?
Right.
We just don't have the floating dock for it yet.
And this, this, we're going back with plastic and this, because the wood you get, what was, what was it, eight years old, seven years old, the stuff that was there?
Seven, eight years old.
Seven, we don't even qualify for another grant there because it rots before the next grant cycle.
It ain't over.
No.
So what kind of columns are they, the pylons? Four-inch things, galvanized. Okay. Steel replacement. But it's gonna be, it's gonna be different material than wooden.
If, if it's steel, do we need to put some corrosion protection on there before we have them installed?
So I don't know. I, I got this actually while we've been sitting in the meeting, so I haven't called him to go through it. But he's aware. I met the contractor on site. He knows the brackish water. He knows that what we're gonna be dealing with.
I assume it's stainless?
Hey, you didn't say stainless.
Stainless pipes, that's, yeah, that's
There's probably another zero after that.
Yeah, wouldn't be that bright.
Except the only other, and I have not even had time to
I bet it's a less job all that, huh?
Well, I haven't had time to talk to the boss about it, but in, in the fund, there's like seventy-seven hundred is what we've identified that's left. This is seventeen-five, so we need to find somewhere. But this'll get us, and, and the other thing, this, he's a very busy contractor like most people that work in this field, and he has a couple jobs coming up Panama City Beach. He was talking like a March deadline to where he could get to it, and I told him that was totally unacceptable, that we needed to do it sooner. And he told me that he could do it on a weekend and possibly get it done in September, so.
I got skin in the game, fellas. I'm telling you, I'm wiping me out on this. I need help.
In age you're bad. In age you're bad.
Okay.
Yeah, same guy.
BCL? Is there so, okay. Parker. Okay. So what kind of post we talking about yet?
It'll be either, it'll probably be HSS column with hot-dip galvanized or some sort of galvanized or zinc-coated material on them, I'd imagine.
It didn't have any of that kind of detailed specs, but I haven't talked to them.
Okay, let's make sure we have some sort of protection on there if we
What kind of light?
And we can, I mean, we can, there's, there's special paint that you can get to paint them, so I mean, you can do that, too. I think that's a good price, for sure.
The, the effort here is trying to get away from wood.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely. The wood's there, the new wood is
Yeah. They changed the treatment on the wood.
Yeah.
I make a motion.
All right, I got a motion by Commissioner Bridger.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner McCrone. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed five and oh. Thanks, sir.
I think we ready for bid. Looks like we are, maybe.
Yes, sir. Bid number twenty-four, twenty-five dash twenty-five for Henry Avenue. Their first bidder, Dire Riddle Mills and Precourt. They do not have a price. I think they submitted for a construction CEI instead. That was what was on their cover sheet, so I think they submitted for the wrong bid, because they had no price in it. Second bid, Gulf Coast Utility Contractors. Their bid is three hundred forty-eight thousand, four hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty cent. Robertson Roberts, Inc., their bid is three hundred thousand, eight hundred seventeen dollars and forty-three cent. American Sand and Asphalt Paving, their bid is four hundred thirty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Contingent upon the final review from the administration, we can award to low bid if it's wishes of the board.
All right. Any questions, board, Commissioners? All right, entertain a motion. We award to the lowest bidder contingent upon Mr. Hammond's recommendations.
I'll make a motion.
All right, motion by Commissioner Macklemore.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Earl McCrone. Any further board discussion?
Mr. McCrone have to abstain on this one due to a conflict with the project.
Yes, sir. All right, anyone in the public? Anyone in the public on this? Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed four and oh, or one abstention?
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have at this time.
All right, thanks, sir. All right. Captain Buchanan got anything? Good, all right. Ms. Norris, you got anything? All right, good. All right, moving on down to board business. Commissioner Husman?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few quick updates today. Mr. Raymond has the playground at Beacon Hill Park about halfway finished, well, more than halfway now that we have the bad parts removed. So that's, so we're getting there on that. Looks really good. Red, red, white, and blue, so I think it fits in very nicely there. Thank you, Mr. Raymond, for doing that. I know it's a, I know Mark, too, that's a, had to go get it and have to put it together to try to save money. So Clay just wanna make sure we've mentioned, see if we can get with FWC on that no wakes on in Overstreet there. People are coming through there at twenty knots and tearing folks' boat up, and multiple calls on that this time, so just wanna make sure we mention that. And the Overstreet community have also got a paving project that we're doing, and we're almost finished with that. We have the striping and pavement markings and signage left for that, and that'll be completely wrapped up, so should be happy there. And an update on the courthouse, the old Gulf County courthouse. We met actually this week, and I think we've nailed down guys where we probably do need to go after the National Historic Register designation. So we're gonna be more apt to get grants, to get grant funding and get more apt to get funded. So I think we're, what the plan would be is to put something in the, in the agenda or the agenda packet next time for, for an approval from the board to go after a grant. The ladies have found a grant that we can go after for a pre-planning grant. And if we can get that, that will help us identify this structure as a national, on the National Historic Register. So there's lots of requirements there. We'll go over them maybe next month, but I'll explain more next month, but I think that's our best, best bet. And it, it will get us what we need to do, I, I think. So we'll, we'll get some respondents on that to help. On the gun range in twenty-two, I think we've, we've more or less nailed down a driver license type permit application fee to get in there, a couple of dollars, and more or less have a card to get in. We'll talk to the tax collector about that, and we'll need to get a sign there as well with an ordinance, and that we can get that going pretty quickly. And Mark should be working on that here coming up shortly. The weather has us really backed up on that, so we are gonna start working on that here the next couple of weeks. Last thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is grass cutting and mosquitoes. This is a cyclical job and this, that time of year. So I just wanna tell everybody, please call us if you have anything. Austin does a great job with what he does, and Mark, of course, does a great job with what he does as well. So please just let us know if y'all have any problems with the roads or, or the mosquitoes. We'll, you'll get right out there and, and start treating more as soon as we can. We have certain limitations on the mosquito spraying, so we'll, we'll max it out as much as we can if you'll, if you'll just call in and let us know. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bridger?
Thank you. I'm gonna start right where you left off on the grass cutting. So the last, beginning last week and going into this week, our public works, I call it the Calvary. The Calvary arrived, and they have been cutting some grass, buddy. Mark, and I think TDC was there, too, so we had guys out cutting, and I truly appreciate it. Our citizens, I've got a lot of citizens calling me, thanking, saying, we're glad you got out there going, because we know, I mean, they were having to stop for the rain showers to cut, cut more grass, but it looks real good. And thank you so much for that. It makes a huge difference. When, when we know we got a problem, but y'all are solving it. The Calvary was there, so thank you. This weekend, and it's, it's been an ongoing issue in Highland View. We were down at, at the VFW, and the smell was, you can't, you can't stand it. It, it is intolerable during this time of the year. I mean, we can go down excuses and all that. I just say we've got to put something in writing, say, hey, fix it. I mean, I'm, it's not fair for a person that, that they can't come out of their house because of the smell. It's horrible. So any recommendations anybody has of how to go forward with that? I know it's been an ongoing problem, but in today's technology we have, in today's society, it's unacceptable. So what can we do? I'm ask, I'm asking experts. We need some, we need some guidance on how we move forward. Do we, do we send a letter saying, fix it? Or do we say, do we need to help you do it, or how do we go proceed with that? Any ideas?
Commissioner McCrone was a city commissioner. He might have an idea.
Thank you, Mike. I have no clue, Commissioner. It is a terrible problem. I came down the canal Saturday, and I think it's the worst I've ever smelled it, and, and I think Michael would have probably had the best avenue.
So, so again, we, we wanna work with them.
Yeah.
But I can remember this board had an emergency meeting three years ago, maybe, two or three years ago, not more than four years ago. Last year may have been the, the lowest number of complaints that we had in my eight years as county administrator. It, it is, it is not fair for anyone to have to live like that, at his third-world country living. And if it was blowing across Monument Avenue, it would be solved immediately. The problem is this. It's an industrial wastewater plant that was built to run a paper mill, and they're running one forty-second of the capacity of that plant on any given day. And every July and August, those plants, or whatever that is, growing in those, those huge ponds bloom, and then they die. And because they can't afford, and again, I understand, they can't afford to aerate. I mean, they've done everything from by solar I mean, they've done everything from bi-solar panel pumps and all this kind of crap. But when, when they aerated and they, they churned that when the paper mill was running, we didn't have that problem. And of course, the temperature was almost boiling in the, in those ponds to start with. But it is an industrial wastewater plant. It's not meant for that. And when that stuff dies and goes septic, the prevailing wind, it, it, it hits Highland View. And again, yeah, you'll gag or you can't go outside. You have to keep your windows closed and you, whatever. It, it's also just not Highland View. It's also the industrial park gets it, you know, depending on.
You hear it in my, my district, too. We can smell it.
Well, if, if I lived in the city and I smelt that crap, I'd be raising hell every day. And again, it, it's, it's, it's an EPA could get on there behind and find them. DEP can get on there behind and find them. It's not in anybody's best interest for them to be fined. We need a solution to that problem that they've been kicking down the road since nineteen ninety-eight. Because that's how long that's been a substandard plant, twenty-seven years. We negotiated with them for a couple of years on, on teaming together on a wastewater plant. You know, we've got money to do that. They don't want to do that. And, and that's unfortunate because again, the, the fix is going to be to get out of that. That, you know, again, that was supposed to go away by two thousand eight. And I know the meltdown and all this other crisis, but they were supposed to go to AWT by two thousand eight. We're eighteen years later and we're no closer to an AWT, you know. And again, you, you want to talk about contamination of the bay and the spray fields going right there on the canal bank? And the discharge that goes into Chicken House Branch? So if they, we could all work together, it'd be wonderful. And again, them not getting fined. But this crap, every single year, every single year, oh, we're going to do better. We're going to spray something in there. We're going to kill the weed. We're going to do whatever. Every year, the people in Highland View had to smell crap for a month. And, and again, it's disgusting. It's unhealthy and, and it's a crying shame. And, and we just, if, if we fiddle around, we'll be here next, next year at the same time. And we'll have the same situation and we'll be no closer to fixing the problem. So my guess is this. Y'all need to send a letter to the city that says, we want to work together to solve this problem. But, but telling us we're going to fix it next year ain't the damn solution.
All right, piggybacking on that, can we, when we send the letter, can we? Both of our legislative asks, they were just down here. And it wasn't on ours and it wasn't on theirs. So we need to, I, I would think that that, this is something that we need to put in, in a priority for us to get. Everybody else is doing it, so we need to do it as well. There, I know they're doing some things over in Appalachia, these point, this legislative session. This is, this is pretty bad. I mean, the smell here, we've got to team up to do this. So when we put that in the letter, it should be part of their legislative package as well as ours. You see what I mean? I mean, I, I know we're sending things. I don't know what that looks like, but at least we need to get it on their radar. Our, our Senator Simon and Representative, they need to know where we're at with that. We're trying to, to mitigate something that's been going on for a long time, but it's a, it's a crisis area because it smells, it smells.
So Commissioner?
Are they presently under a consent order of any kind?
I believe they are. And they have been off and on for the last twenty-eight years. The, the, the fix is this. We need a regional utility.
Thank you.
That is a, that is the fix. We, so again, I've, I've been nice about it. The county got thirty million dollars to build a new wastewater plant. We just, you just agreed to terms with the city of Weewall. We fixed to take the city of Weewall sewage. They're going to ship it twenty-two miles south to our wastewater plant that we're building. It is asinine for the city not to then team with us. Again, they keep all their customers, they keep whatever. We just wholesale, it could be water and sewer, but sewer, to, to a state of the art, efficient sewer plant. And, and get out of the spray field business and get out of the, the, this massive, again, they inherited it. None of those guys are responsible for, for inheriting the fact that the paper mill closed and they've got this old plant. But, but we can't continue to kick the can. And again, I've heard they asked for a hundred million dollars to, to, to do something. You know, they got, I heard Basketball Don been working on it out of Pensacola. But the gist is this. For a, for a fraction of that amount, we could do a regional utility and, and solve the smell problem. And it would be much cheaper in addition to better for the environment all the way around. Because we're going to reuse. And, and, and again, that's, that's the fix. It's, it's not, legislature gives a hundred million dollars and we're going to, we're going to build, we're going to build another one. And we'll be even less efficient because we'll have, you know, sewer plant within two miles of each other.
Michael, is that, is that a earthen deck? Is that?
You talking about their deal?
Is that a earthen?
A hundred acres?
Yeah. Those ponds?
That's what I'm saying. That's just earthen.
Yeah. The, the plant's going to be, it's going to have to be massive on that, would you say?
Oh, I, I, I agree. Well, the, and again, the devil's always in the details. The, the, the new plant's not a hundred million dollars. I mean, it, it's, it's roughly, you know, the, the, the price for us to build a million gallon day plant was somewhere between thirty and thirty-two. So they're only using that when it's not raining a day. So I mean, just say they built a million five, that's forty-five million. No, the, the price for cleanup on that was forty million dollars or some, some asinine number.
So.
And again, the, the, the question is that that's, could be a superfund site. It could be a lot of other things. There's a value to that hundred and something acres that they've got there eventually, once they get it cleaned up. So it could mitigate some of that cost long term. But, but right now, you talk about an economic crisis or a crisis for the bay. You, you let that, that berm get a crack in it and it all dump into the bay. You talk about a, a economic and, and environmental disaster, yeah.
That's, so.
It's a ticking time bomb.
Let me, let me bring this in because we'll be here all day talking about it. So we can build the wastewater treatment plant that's contained and we can have reused water to, for irrigation water. That's how clean it's going to be. It's going to be in a site that's not going to affect other cities' smells.
Correct.
The city Weewall hits, because they already agreed to say, hey, we want to do this. So they're going to basically clean up some of Spole River.
Absolutely.
It's going to clean up Spole River.
Same scenario.
That's one environmental thing that we're trying to do right there. It's going to go to this ticket. So if we went you, this universally, then we take the baside off of it, too, where it goes into the spray field plus the smell. So it's a no-brainer.
Absolutely.
That's why we need to, to couch this, councilor. However, we do that with, with a letter. I mean, it needs to say, this is a no-brainer. This is what it costs. If we team up together, we're already with the other city, other municipality. We go to a, a united front and we said, these are the environmental concerns that we have that, that this will address. And it's better for the citizens going forward.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I'm going to stay in my lane on the legal aspect of this. I was at that workshop with the city of Weewall where Michael and Clay worked with the city. I appreciate you commissioners working with them. And you solved a real problem for the city of Weewall going forward, generational. I mean, it is a huge problem you helped them with, where they were going to have problems funding that in the future. So I think it's a great interlocal that you sent to them today, environmentally for Weewall, too, and the county. Obviously, increased flow lowers the cost for everybody as well in the county. So you're going to help them with the cost legally. And I think it's maybe another elephant in the room. And I hate to beat this drum, but every year we're here in July and August talking about this smell. Something's changed. The smell's the same every summer and it's the same problem every summer. But there's one new problem that you commissioners are dealing with that you haven't dealt with in the past. And that's something that needs to be addressed as well. They're trying to put two hundred apartments next to this. And we're not talking about Highland View. We're not talking about Northport St. Joe. We're talking about, we're in court right now trying to keep apartments from directly adjacent to this property. So this is a problem that comes up every year. We're now in court to stop apartments going in next door to it, but they haven't resolved that problem as well. So you just add another layer to the issue that I just addressed with you on your resolutions. Talk about the environmental impacts, the economic impacts and moving the community forward. Right now, we're trying to keep these apartments from going right next to this plant. Where they'll, two hundred new folks are going to obviously deal with this every summer as well. And yes, I could take that on the letter, sir.
You're going to hear about it. And, and I'm not letting it go. So whatever we need to do, folks, I mean, that's bad. It, it's, it's not acceptable for us in this, this day and time to walk out your door and smell that. That's just not good.
So y'all go vote to send a letter? Is that?
Can I get them? I'll make a motion.
Your motion to send a letter to the city of Port St. Joe?
Yeah, and can we draft it? Can we draft it and get to the, all our commissioners before? Can we do that? So before we send it, to make sure we got it and so everybody knows what we're sending over there to them.
I got a motion by Commissioner Bridger.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Housman. Any further board discussion? Anyone? Anyone in the public? Yes, ma'am. Come on, state your name, address for the record. Oh, I seen two hands come up? I'm sorry. I, I, I got you first.
Christie McElroy, Port St. Joe. I'm glad y'all are addressing this. I live almost to Sixteenth Street. I get up early in the morning, go in the backyard and you can already smell it. And it's not just in July and August. It's almost all year round. It's something that if we're going to continue to grow, no matter who builds apartments, houses, whatever. And when other municipalities are trying to put onto our water systems and our sewer systems and we just can't handle it right now. So creating a solution around this for what is currently going on in our future is imperative because you're right. We get another big storm that sets in on us and has a lot of wind. That plant is so close to the water. We're putting ourselves in dire jeopardy for our citizens as well as our environment. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
Gentlemen, that maze, one subject home breezeway. I just wanted to add, when you're writing this letter, to do a little bit of research. I know that the city has put in Triumph Gulf Coast request before to redo the plant. Didn't go anywhere. But I believe in that Triumph Gulf Coast request, it mentioned that they only have, I think it's either five or eight years. I can't remember. I wasn't expecting this. Before the FDPP has required that those settling ponds be totally gone. So they, they are, they know they're coming up on a, on a deadline. And I think if you're going to write the letter, you need to just look at, at that, what FDPP is going to be requiring. Because they know it's coming up and they need to be reminded of that. I think it would help in the letter, that's all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, that date is twenty thirty-two. There's a date in twenty thirty-two that has to happen.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else in the public? Yes, sir. Come on, come on. Come on up, state your name, address for the record.
Thank y'all for hearing me. I'm not going to take much of your time. There's three, four, five of us have been doing a little bit.
State your name, state your name for the record.
We all know you, but you have to do it for the record.
Carmen Mclemore. Danny Tankersley, I'm sorry. Anyway. Got to put a little humor in it. I've been had to pee for about twenty minutes. Hey, we've been doing a little research and we want y'all to look in to talking and getting with the state and figure out why St. Andrews Bay and Crooked Island Sound have not been opened up to scallop. There's plenty of scallops in both. But we're going to do some more looking and some picture taking for y'all where you won't be in the dark. But that would take a lot of pressure off of our bay. And I know we got the tourist people in here, so we have also talked about that. I've called Clint and I've called a lot of people that do this for a living, including myself. And, you know, we figured twenty, twenty-five percent of people are coming from the west. Would you say that? I don't either, but I'm guessing. But they're pretty male, pretty much self-contained, you know. They're going to bring their gas, they're going to bring their food, they're going to come and they're going to scallop. They won't go back. So not a lot of economic impact, I don't think. But that might be something y'all want to study, too. And I know it's not going to get done overnight. I have an aerial picture of the first day of scallop season, if any of you would like to look at it.
I saw it fly.
It'd scare you.
So you would.
You couldn't parachute that air because you'd hit a boat. But what I'm saying, if those two open at the same time, it might would take some pressure off of this bay. And I, I know right now, everybody says it. There's more scallops than there's been, correct? There's more lobster I just left from down there than I've seen in ten years. You get a lament in two hours every day. There's more blue crabs, people have told me. It's just a real good year. But there is a lot, a lot of pressure being put on that bay, almost to the point that it's dangerous in some counts. But if there's some kind of way y'all could look into the state and see what the situation, or even maybe the Bay County Commission, see if that might be some kind of option.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, Captain Tankersley's taken the fifth on his name. So it's Danny Tankersley for the record, sir. So he's noted for Miss Cooper's record. Yes, sir. I just wanted that noted for the record.
I tell y'all something else, too. You might want to check over there in Franklin County. They got one of the best recycling programs over there you ever want to see. And they're using inmates to do it. And that would cut you about twenty-five percent of what you got hauled. Might be something to look at. You sell your plastic, your paper, your metal, aluminum, and all you're going to be hauling is household gardens, you know. So I mean, it's just. I mean, we in and out of there. I'm not so much. They fired me. They said I talked too much. Anyway, thank y'all much. Is there any way I could help and look into this? Let me know. I'd be glad to. But we're going to go, Doug, I'm done, run over my time. But anyway, Doug and Michael and myself are going to go and look and get some coordinates for you.
Motion to extend. I want to ask questions, if you don't mind. We got a couple of questions.
All right, so I got a, hold on, let me get this done. So I got a motion by Commissioner Macron to extend this time.
I'll say it.
Second by Commissioner Housman. Any opposition to motion? Motion passed five and oh.
We're going to try to have a workshop after this tour season we talked about. The, this is one of our big draws on the tourism. So I think we're going to need some of that data for that because this is definitely going to come up. When you said twenty to twenty-five coming from the west, I'm going to say it's a, that's a very low number. That's a very low number. And they're not, I don't know that they're bringing, they're kind of self-contained. Let's go ahead and say what that means. They're, they're getting it at Walmart and they're coming here and they're gone. They're not, they're not spending a dime.
And they're going not spending the night, you know.
Yes, sir. And you're, you're spot on with that? And so if, all that information you can get with your group is going to be beneficial when we have that workshop on, on, on the tourism side. Because it's going to be.
I'd be glad to help you any way I can.
Okay.
And, you know, I talked to two or three people that do this and Clint Moore and I had a long discussion today. And like he says, it don't matter if you open those two bays, there's still going to be plenty of people coming to take care of the people that are doing it for a living and the people who are selling food and all that, you know, downtown. You know, restaurants and all. But anyway, thank y'all so much for your time. Y'all have a great day.
Still got this motion open. Anyone else in the public on the, the letter, letter, PSJ?
To the city.
To the city. Anyone else? Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed five and oh.
Oh. I'm sorry. BCC contract, when is that up?
Yeah, twenty-seven. May of twenty-seventh. They're in the last, I believe they're in the last two years of.
Okay.
May of twenty-seven, I believe they're in the last two-year extension of their current contract, I believe it is.
Okay. I just was wondering, I've had some questions. We got some, as we know, we have some pains out there with, with the numbers going and stuff. I think they've hired some new people, so we might, I'd get with Clay. We, we need to have some conversations about that. The workshops, I did say that when, we were talking about a trip to Mobile to look at that port. Is he, who's, who's taking the lead on that? Who's taking the lead on that? Do we want me to... How do we want to do that? I'd love to get a group over there to go see what that looks like.
You tell us. McKnight and I can put something together if you want to. Or you take the lead. The main gist is this. We're going to need to do it probably on a weekend where if we're going to get everybody to herd the cats. But I would hope like October-ish.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think they're in the wintertime. Jim, can you...
Yeah, we'll work on something and get some dates.
You want to go on to Fort Fushon?
Whatever you want.
If you'll rent us a plane, that is a long way off of I-10. Because when you turn off, you go south for 200 miles. It's a long way, and it's not really an easy way.
Yeah.
There's some good restaurants along the way.
You got plenty of time.
Jim, before next board meeting, will you have maybe like a little idea how we can do this in October? And if it runs into November, that's fine. And some of our guest list may be someone from Triumph? I mean, I'd like to have one of those staff members, if that's all right with y'all. I think they need to be in there. Maybe Great Northwest. Anybody else you can think of that needs to go over there and see just what we're talking about with that and how that, all that works together? Okay, somebody from the city, somebody from Weewall Hitchcock City, if they want to go. I mean, this is a county thing, so. Okay. And I want to let everybody know that all the work that's going on at our two things, of course, White City. Thank y'all for the update on that, the boat ramp. And Howard Creek, Clay, it's going pretty good. Mark, thanks for taking out the island. And St. Joe Beach repaving is fixing to start. Pine Street to 386 after Labor Day. So everybody be ready for that. We know how much traffic's on that road. It's going to be... We're going to have to see how that goes, right, Clay? I just want to give everybody heads up. And then we're having more meetings on crosswalks and stuff. And to follow up, the last thing I have is when are we going to meet with the secretary? Have you decided?
We're waiting on them. They know. In fact, I think you ran into the secretary. He knows that we're waiting and our request is in. So as soon as we get a couple of dates, I will get back with y'all.
All right. Thank you.
And I'd love for all of y'all to go to that, if you can.
Thank y'all for that. That's it.
All right. Mr. McElmore.
I just got a couple of updates. The bathrooms at Gaskin Park, we're getting them finished. Raymond's got the doors and the new door jams. So as soon as we get that done, that'll be completed. I'm excited to see what... How Randy's docks turn out because I got the same issue in Weewall. And that might be something that we look at and try to get that replaced because, you know, the boards just ain't holding up. They rotten. So that's the next thing we're going to work on for sure. Honeyville Park, we was able to replace the fence there and got a new chain link fence up there, just one step at a time. Get things fixed. I like to always thank staff from the offices to out in the field. Without them, we couldn't do it. And I'm calling them all day long, you know, and they completing projects. And I want to say thank y'all. Appreciate it. That's all I got, Chairman.
Okay, yes, sir. Commissioner Macron.
Oh, a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. South Gulf Fire. Mike, you here? Want to tell you, I appreciate you. I know y'all guys have been running wide open. Commissioner, I think you had backed up on one of the fires, but had a full structure fire. What day was it? Friday or Saturday? Full structure fire at the Cape, and man, it's hot. And Mike and those guys, and y'all spent how many hours? I think some of the other crews come in and relieved you. But how many hours y'all stayed on that one house just to make sure it didn't?
Mr. Barrett, come on up. Come on up to the microphone for us, please.
Thank you. We were dispatched Saturday morning about 6:30, and we went into what we just call a downgrade salvage mode Sunday afternoon, probably about 6:00 or 7:00 p.m. on Sunday. We still have some hot spots because it's caved in and there's void spaces. So we have equipment still there, and I have people still basically around the clock there babysitting it.
I tell you, Mike, we appreciate y'all because, I mean, these guys are volunteers and appreciate what y'all do. And people don't realize the hours it takes. Even after you put a fire out, you got to stay on site and you got to keep it monitored. I just want to tell you, I appreciate y'all. Went out and looked at your new tanker.
Yes, sir.
This morning. Great truck. Great truck.
Yeah, it's... You know, firefighting is a tough business, and it's more than just wearing the T-shirt. And the people, not only in South Gulf, but all the fire departments in Gulf County, they are a blessing to us. They work very hard. And my people are really tired right now, but they're still ready to go. And they not only have the physical toughness, but they have the mental toughness to do this job, just like all the other departments. And we are a family. The only thing that divides fire departments is geography. Every one of these departments here and anywhere in the United States, we are all one family. We are brothers and sisters, and we all depend on each other. And we appreciate the support and backing that we get from the board and from the county. So we're very blessed, and we're very proud to do what we do.
Appreciate y'all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Say just one quick thing because we do appreciate you. And I want you to talk about this, Mike, when we have the chief's meeting. I appreciate you taking a stand on these lost cause deal, not putting folks in harm's way. This is a new type of building. I think this is the second one that we've had that has burned. It's got a byproduct that can kill you, and it also could have collapsed. So y'all not going in and risking folks' lives on just property. That was not a habited house. It was in construction. It's a great thing because one bad mistake could have got somebody killed. And so I do appreciate that. And I would like us to have some more discussion at our chief's meeting about that.
Yes, I appreciate it. What I try to instill, just real quick, I'll get out of your way, is it's risk versus reward. And I don't know of a structure on the planet that's worth getting one firefighter injured or killed or civilian. And it's one of the things that you learned as incident commander or as an officer is, is it worth it? And it's hard to watch somebody's structure burn down. It really, truly is. But what is more important, a life or a structure? And so, you know, we're not perfect. We do a good job, though. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mara went down and looked at Cape Palm's entrance park. And great job, man. I appreciate that. And people can access the beach now. I hope we try to keep that open. I know it's been tough this year with the tides, the way they've been. But I wanted to tell you, I went and took a look at that, and I appreciate that. Spike, I'm going to help you out on one thing. And I keep forgetting every time we come to a meeting. But I tell you what we need to look at. And as nice a park as Honeyville is, nice a field, we need some bathrooms. I'm being honest. And that's something, sooner than later, it's got bathrooms, but it is a lot to be desired. And it's not my district, but my granddaughter plays up there a lot. And that's something that we need to put on the radar because...
It's already there.
Okay. So, anyone?
Can I add to that? So if y'all get a chance over in Callaway, that new part they got over there, they got a brand... It's almost like they built this gang bathroom or two bathrooms somewhere and brought it and set it down. Have you seen that? That is... Oh, yes. Right there in Callaway, their new park. And I was... We went and looked at it, and it was something that you could get done quickly. I don't know how much, you know, how much it cost, but it was something that you could say, you know, it looked very affordable. And they just like brought it in on a truck and set it down. And there you got a male and a female bathroom. So I agree with that one. That was absolutely...
That's all I have.
All right. Only thing I got is I got a couple of things. Like I say, we can't thank you guys enough for all you do. Mark, every time, you know, I reach out to you, you got a solution to the problem. So appreciate that. Mr. Raymond, thank you for taking care of that bus stop. None but great compliments in the community. I know we got a... I sent Mark something to see if we can kind of work out a couple of kinks out of it. But I said, I'm pretty sure you'll come up with an idea so we can work it out. And I also appreciate you every time I reach out to you, you get on board. So I appreciate you taking care of the things that you do handling for us. I don't know what we'll do without you guys, but, man, it'll be tough. But I appreciate you guys and what you do to help make our jobs a whole lot easier from the work crews on down. So thank you, guys. Only thing I ask Mr. Hammond is next time we have our board meeting, if we could have an update on the housing, if we could have an update for that. And that's all I got, is an update. So we're going to move on down. I'm going to switch something around. I want to bring Ms. Graham up from St. Andrew. St. Joseph's Bay Estuary Program. We'll go ahead and move her on up, and then we'll go into quasi-judicial.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having me. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead. Just introduce yourself for us.
Jessica Graham. I'm the executive director of the St. Andrew and St. Joseph Bay Estuary Program. I love all the conversation. I have lots of great things to tell you guys about. Although our program is... Our office is in Panama City. We do cover the entire St. Andrew Bay watershed. And that includes half of Gulf County, St. Joe Bay, St. Andrew Bay, and portions of five other counties. And we're working to try to identify projects to make a difference, but also really to strike a balance between our way of life, our community needs, and our natural resource needs. So I wanted to come today to talk about some of the things that we've been doing over the past few years, but also clear up any misconceptions that may exist about our program. So the first is that we are not a regulatory entity at all. We don't make laws. We don't make rules. We certainly don't tell you guys what you should be doing. We're really just trying to collaborate. We don't have any jurisdiction. We are also not an enforcement entity of existing rules and laws. We're also not an advocacy group. We're not going to be the ones to come up here and scream at you for doing something that you made the decision to do. We're not in the finger-pointing or the blame arena. What we do is we try to work collaboratively. We try to identify what your needs are. So I heard a few here today that we actually can give you some of that information already. And we're trying to identify and listen to what those needs are. So one of the things that came up was the scallops. We've already compiled all of that data. It's on your handout that you have in this one here on page nine. There's a figure out here. It shows the condition. It's based on FWC's recommendation. St. Andrew Bay is listed as caution. St. Joe Bay is listed as warning. So the point of there being a lot of a population, the densities were actually the same based on what the data was between St. Joe and St. Andrew Bay. It's not open likely because there's an ongoing study that's happening right now. And we're listed as caution in St. Andrew Bay because there's not that recreational pressure of harvest. And so I think once that study wraps up in the next year, we may actually see some movement, we hope. Some additional projects that we've been working on, and you have a lot of information. But over the past few years, we've talked with some of your staff, your citizens. We've held a number of community workshops to try to understand what your priorities are and what your challenges are. And we put that all into a comprehensive conservation and management plan. And that's the book that you have at your seats. It has a lot of fluff in the beginning. It's history. Hopefully, it's a fun read. But then it gets into the actions. And so that's really what our focus is for the next... It's supposed to be 10 years. We're already a year into it, so nine years now. And so those are really where our focus is. It's not just about what's in the water, but it includes things like flooding issues, stormwater issues. So we are trying to work on things like that. You talked about Port St. Joe's refuse pond. That is a priority that we see as well. I have spoken with the city commission about that. And from my understanding, is there is a willingness to partner with the Gulf County on some of your more recent securing funding for an increased water treatment plant. Those are probably just a few conversations here and there and with one or two people. But I do think there's an appetite. I did pass along the example from Military Point, which is over in Bay County. That's where Callaway, Springfield, and Parker, Bay County all partner together on that wastewater treatment plant where they basically own a certain volume within that kind of authority of that wastewater treatment plant, which is a motto that could potentially work for you all if that's the desire that you want to go. So overall, we're just trying to learn from you and try to work towards finding projects that you all find important to be able to really leverage our efforts and expand our impact. None of the things that are in that plan, we can do independently. I can't dig a ditch and run a sewer line, but we can seek out funding and work with your staff to get some funding to alleviate the individual pressure and financial burden that those individuals are going to have to hook up to that sewer. We see it all the time. Their sewer lines run. There's houses there. But it's financially not feasible for them to hook up. So those are things that we can help to work on. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have anything further. Love to work with you further in the future, but that's all I had.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Any question?
Yes, question. Tell me about... So we applied for... And one of the things we talked about. And we've got a plan going forward for our living shoreline in Highland View.
Yes, sir.
And I see y'all are applying for the same thing. Why is that?
Oh, no, we're not applying for the same thing. We have some things going on that may actually help to help you skip a step of the planning and go straight into design. We already have money for... We already have money to do a living shoreline suitability assessment, which will look at the situation of each of the areas in St. Joe Bay and St. Andrew Bay. That will help to identify, do you need just planting? Do you need a seawall? Do you need living shoreline breakwaters? Those types of practices that need to be employed. That was applied for in 2022 through Restore Funding, through DEP's pot of money through Restore. And we're just now starting to get it. We also have an ongoing project that is looking at the effectiveness of living shorelines across Pensacola Bay, Choctawatchee Bay, and St. Andrew Bay. We didn't include St. Joe Bay because we didn't know of any living shorelines that existed. And so that is looking at, does it actually create fish habitat? Does it accrete and actually stop erosion? And those are... We have about a year's worth of data. So we're not applying for a planning resilient Florida to do what you guys are doing.
So just for clarification, so y'all already have the data and the planning?
So the 3B is the pot that we applied for in 2022 for the living shoreline suitability assessment. That grant hasn't been executed yet, but it's like we already have the work plan. We've reviewed it. So it should be very close to being executed. And then we'll work over the next 18 months to get that information. And then that's kind of the assessment of the sites to be able to determine what is appropriate in those sites.
Okay. And we are looking specifically at the Highland View.
Yeah, I just... The reason I'm saying this, I don't want any... Because your timeline is one thing. That's not ours.
Sure.
So, I mean, we're in a planning grant with one of our partners, Appalachian Regional Planning Council.
Okay.
And he's already been down there. That's why... And they're going after these dollars. I don't want the 18-month thing to get anything involved with what we have.
We won't. We won't get in your way.
We'll make sure. Thank you.
No, yeah. If you want that information to be used for anything, it'll be there.
Yeah, they might reach out to you.
But no, we will not be in your way.
If I could, Mr. Chairman. Jessica, how long has St. Andrew Bay been closed to scalping? Do you presently? Do you know?
I would have to look back at the data. It's been decades.
Yeah, I'm just wondering. And if you let the state go right on, they'll just keep right on studying. They'll never, they'll never open. Did I hear you say that the amount of scallops is the same as St. Joe Bay?
The densities were...
The density is the same. And they still... I mean, far from past experience on other issues, the state, they'll study right on forever. You know, they don't have no... Those biologists don't have any desire to do it, you know?
If I'll just clarify the study that I mentioned. So that study was Nerd of Money. And so that expires at the end of 2026. And so they have to wrap up that particular study. Now, I don't know what their plans are in the future, but they will have to come to a close on that scallop-specific study. That's the money that did the scallop sitters and other things like that.
Yeah, I would say at least 20, what, probably 30, going on 30 years, they've had, they've had that bay closed.
Yep.
Yeah.
That must have got to be illegal.
I didn't hear anything.
I didn't know it was that long ago.
You didn't go to crooked out.
I did.
There's also, we learned a lot about how they survey for that data. And so I think right now with the study, they were able to do additional surveys. And then moving forward, we're hoping that they'll continue to do the post-harvest survey before they would do it pre-harvest. And so it doesn't always give you the right count of things.
Okay, okay.
So you, you're going to do a, a post-harvest in St. Joe Bay this year?
They do it. They do, right now, they're doing, uh, FWRI, I'm sorry. They do a pre and a post because they have the additional money. I think moving forward, they're gonna only be able to do one, which is what they did prior to getting that grant. Now, whether or not they do a pre or a post is going to be up to them. We've worked with our commissioners to recommend to state legislatures what we think that should be to be an accurate count moving forward so that you guys are getting a true population assessment.
Jessica, let me ask you this. Does, you, you may not know this. Does FWC do, so once scallop season closes, do, do they go out and check the bay?
I believe they do a post-harvest right now.
Yeah. So they go out, okay.
Right. Now, whether that's comprehensive, I know in St. Andrew Bay, our count, we don't have a harvest, but they do at the same time. It got canceled and never rescheduled. So if it gets canceled, I'm not sure what they do with rescheduling it.
What is the, I can't remember. Is it a two-year cycle on scallops?
It's five to seven.
They die?
Five to seven is when you see population booms.
They're not harvested. They all, they die anyway.
But they're about a two-year life cycle.
Yeah, two-year life cycle. Yeah.
Well, I'm just curious. So if FWC, once they do their study, if they, if they go into St. Joe's Bay and they say, hey, the numbers are down, I, I already know what probably they're going to do. They're going to probably close it.
I think you guys have a lot of power over that on whether or not they're going to close it. So I think understanding, there's a lot of levels of closure that they can do. You guys aren't in a crisis situation. I think this year shows that. You have a bunker crop this year. I, I know I have friends that have said that they've never seen it like this since they were kids. Now, I think that understanding the limitations of that data, and you'll see in this, we have low confidence on those conditions because of the limitations of the data is where you can have a voice.
So do you, do you share that? Who did you share? Is this on your website?
Absolutely. Yes. And you have a QR code on that little sheet and you can get.
Pre and post and?
Yes, you can see all the raw data, the actual report. This is executive summary. The actual report is over 200 pages. We also have an online dashboard where you can go zoom in and be interactive with everything. So it's, it's for you all. If you want to just ask us questions and us to pull anything, just let us know. We're happy to do it.
I see you have an office in Lynn Haven. So y'all still have it?
And we're hosted at the FSU Panama City Campus. They give us office space. We're beggars.
And one last question. You, you talked about the, the waste treatment plant. Do you ever sample in some specific areas there in Highland View? Have you done any, when you said you did the plan, have you done any sampling there?
We're not specifically sampling. We're compiling existing information when we're doing these types of reports. We did receive a $750,000 grant to start up a citizen science water quality monitoring program here in St. Joe Bay. And so that, we haven't identified where the stations are. And so we are, we're happy to take recommendations on where you think those stations should be. And we'll be sampling for total nitrogen, total phosphorus, chlorophyll, and then the normal parameters of salinity.
How many test sites, if you don't mind?
We're gonna, we have funding to do 10. So it's not a lot, but it's.
And, and timeline on that?
We have the grant right now. We just need to get the QOP approved by the, the Quality Assurance and Protection Plan. It's just to make sure that our methods are good enough for their, their check fact, fact checkers. So once we get that approved, which we hope will be in a couple of months, we'll be able to recruit volunteers.
Thank, thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the information.
Quasi judicial review and consideration, PDRB application, plan development project amendment, Salt Pines. Mr. Crane?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The item that we have before you today is a plan development project amendment. The applicant is 68 V. Salt Pines FL 2024 LLC. Location is 37.21 acres on Garrison Avenue in Port St. Joe, Florida 32456. Parcel numbers 03019-000R and 03040-002R. Section 7, Township 8 South, Range 10 West. They request an approval of an amendment to a plan development project, Salt Pines. This is a plan development project that was approved by this board back in July of 2024. And the ordinance was adopted, putting this PDP into motion in September 2024. We originally approved 100 townhomes. One of the asks that they're asking is to reduce that amount to 80 detached, single-family homes as opposed to the 100 townhomes. And that's both, there's a portion of this that's in the city and a portion of this that's in the county. The original number was 84 in 16, 84 in the county, 16 in the city. The new number that they're proposing would be, it's a total of 80. So I think it's like 12 and 68 is the number. And then they're also proposing that their impervious on each individual lot would go from 70% to 60%. And their overall, for the entire development, we had required them to stay at the 30, which is required by the LDR. And this new change would limit that down, or would reduce that down to 20. The other issue is, is we had approved basically a zero lot line setback for the townhomes with seven and a half on the ends of the units. And they're requesting that on the detached, single-family homes, that they setbacks on the sides be all set at five foot with a 10-foot separation. And I believe there might be someone here to speak on that also.
All right, if you're here to speak on this issue, please step forward.
Hey, Grant Rish, 812 Marvin Avenue. I'm just here if there's any questions. Happy to answer any.
All right. Yes, sir. Grant, do you have any objection with us waiving quasi judicial here?
No, sir.
All right, can I get a motion to waive?
Sub move.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Macron.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Huzman. Anyone in public against waiving quasi judicial? Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed 5-0. All right, anything you need to, you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to inform you guys, this plan development project amendment, we did send back before your PDRB board on August the 18th of this month. And the PDRB came back with a recommendation to the B O C C, a 4-0 vote to approve this plan development project amendment.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, anything you want to add? I know you say, Mr. Crane said you're going from 100 townhomes now to 80 detached, single-family homes.
Yes, sir. The biggest thing is just that, you know, we are going from the, what we had was townhomes. There was 100 total units there that are townhomes that are no lot lines. And so anyway, what we're proposing now would be single-family detached. And so that has 10-foot separation. So it's going to be a lot more green space. You know, most of the time we're up here, we're trying to increase, you know, we need more. In this case, we're wanting to go less. And so we're going to open up a lot more green space, a lot more separation. And we feel it's a much greater, better product for our area.
All right. Any questions, Commissioners, for, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I, I got a question.
Mr. Rish.
And, well, this is going to be for, for Doug.
Yes, sir.
And, and I'll always ask this, Doug. Is this in compliance with the rules?
Yes, sir. I know generally someone would talk about our current setbacks per the LDR. But there is a section in our LDR that allows for plan development projects. Those plan development projects, it, one of the things that is, is within the LDR, the rules, is that under the plan development project, it allows for site design flexibility, which includes things like clustering the units and, and keeping more green space density, setbacks, impervious area. All of those things, it, it's for better design and better use of the land is what it allows. And it, and usually it is a swap out for different things. It's when they can show mitigative measures that show that they might not meet the exact rule of the LDR, but they meet the intent of the rule. And those are things that are all considered by the PDRB and, and whether it complies with the rules of the PDP. And that was looked at by our PDRB. And just one thing on that density deal that we are, I think we roughly, in this one, we have like 38 acres here. And we're talking about doing 80 units on. So it's almost two units, only about two units per acre. If you, we feel that really fits in within the area. If you look across the street, there's roughly like 13 acres with 84 units. And if you look right beside it, there's roughly about five acres that has 40-something units. So, you know, those are at basically about six and a half units per acre and about eight units per acre. And on ours, we're talking about somewhere more like two units per acre. So ours is way, way less than everything around it. You know, and, you know, you got the commercial, you got the health department, but you know, everything else right there at it has a lot higher density than what we're asking for. And what we're approved for, we're already approved for a lot higher density. We, we want to go down on density because we want to switch the product from a townhome, no lot line, to a single-family detached home.
All right. Y'all got any more questions?
I got, I got one more question.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, let me ask you this, Doug. Is anybody in this room or in this county, can they get the five-foot setback?
The LDR currently, our side setbacks are either seven and a half and nine and a half. That depends on the height of the structure. In this particular structure, it would be seven and a half. Of course, if you turned in an application in my office, it would have to show seven and a half setbacks or we would deny it. Now, they would have the option of going before the PDRB for a variance or coming before this board. And then, you know, the option to give that to them would be left up to you guys, much as why Mr. Rish is here today asking for this.
I'll give you one more caveat. On a pre-comp plan house existing, if your house is built on a lot line and you want to build a, a house on the neighboring lot, you can get 10, which would be a combination of five. So there are, that's one more example where you could have less.
Thanks, sir. You still got four.
That's all the questions I got. That is.
All right. You got any objection with us waiving the formal reading?
Yes, sir.
All right, can I get a motion to waive the formal reading?
Sub move.
Motion by Commissioner Macron. Second by Commissioner Huzman. All right. Anyone in the public against waiving the formal reading? Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed 5-0. All right, Doug, one more time. What did the PDRB recommend?
The recommendation from the PDRB was a 4-0 vote to approve this plan development project amendment.
All right, y'all, I would just add, I, I have, I have no problem since, since you're going from 100 townhomes and we know what, how town, townhomes are built, and you're going to 80 detached, single-family homes. I, I, I would, I would rather prefer the single-family home. So I, I have no issue with, with moving forward with it. What's the wishes of the board?
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Look at this, y'all. I know this is something that took place two boards ago, and it's been a long, drawn-out process. But moving on today after this, we need to go by what the rules and regulations says. If that's what it says, then that's, that's what we need to go by. It makes it simpler for staff. It makes it simpler for commissioners and administration. And, and it makes it simpler for developers. They know, they know they like, well, no, this is what the commission requires, and this is what we're going to do. And I just, whatever the decision is, in the future, I think that's what we need to do as a board.
Can I add something too?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
You're, you're speaking to the choir. If, if we look back at when this took place originally, neither you or I were on the board. And I know Mr. Commissioner Macron, it was like, that's a lot of traffic going in there with 100. And so this is a decrease on that. It's not following the rules, like you said, the whole way. But that being said, it makes a bad thing better, in my opinion, because it was, I, I, PUDs, I'm not a fan of PUDs. I never will be a fan of PUDs, especially in this small county where we don't have the infrastructure to do it. The, the, the PUD created a problem back when it happened in October. And, and you heard me say it. I said it, that right where you were and said, I don't appreciate it that you're doing this, but it, it happened anyway. But it's already happened. And he could turn around there and say, well, you know what? There's two other ways he could go with this. And it, both of those two things he could do would be a lot worse than what we're going to get right here. And those would, he could walk away and you back to 100, which is more traffic on that road. Or he could go use the A word, which we don't want to go through, which he's a builder. I mean, he's in the building for that. That's even worse than going back to what he has now. So I guess that's, that's all, that's, that's my thoughts on it. But this is a deeper one that I think we need to look at with the PRB board. And I, I mentioned it yesterday with Mr. Crane, the new thing about making more restrictive. There's a new statute out that I know small counties and other counties are trying to, to get away from because it basically saying that you don't have any control over, over those things, making any changes to that. And so I've done a little research today, called out to the Association of Counties and trying to got, pick their brains about the new legislation. And I don't like the fact that we have a vote. And I'm just going to throw this out there. I don't like that, that, that board votes on anything. I don't mind giving recommendations. But when you put a vote on there and then we sit up here and if we decide to go against it, we've got a, an entity that's publicly doing work for us saying you should, and then we're making it more restrictive and going against it. Now, I, I don't know that that's something that we need to address in the future on anything that we do with the PRB. It, it brought that up in my mind. In other words, I'd love to see that they, we still have it and they make recommendations, not a vote, but a sheer recommendation. In other words, they lay out the scenario of why they're even coming there. So why, why are you not following the rules? You know, what, what is that? Is there some mitigating factor that created that? And then we get to decide, say, hey, you know, maybe, because it's, it's not black and white. There's some gray on, on some of these things because there's so much that has gone before and here before. And we know that the state is looking at more and more people coming here. I look for legislation. As you will watch, they're going to go forward with some more government allowing them to say, your local control over that's not going to happen. We all know that. You see it happening. So with that being said, I think we need to look at that. It has nothing to do with you, this, this thing, but I think we need to look at that, if we're following the rules and all. I think we need to have a, a bigger discussion on how that board works. And the recommendations we have, the information we get ahead of time, so we can then make our decision on it.
Let me say this, Ms. Chairman. I, I was the one on the 4-1 vote on this development. And initially, y'all, y'all know how I felt. I, I was against it. I said, I didn't think it belonged where, where, where it sits in the neighborhood. And, and I was voted down. And, and I've moved on. You know, I said, you know, I lost the vote and, and we need to move on. And Doug called me about this and he said, that we were going to go with 80 units instead of the 100 units, Doug, and, and single-family homes.
Yes, sir.
I like that better. I'll be honest with you. And, and to me, that's a win going down to 80 and, and the single-family homes instead of the townhomes. That's in, that's in my backyard, you know? And, and, and I think it is, is, is less impacted. You know, ultimately, if, if this would have come up, Commissioner Beck, when, if you'd have been sitting to my left, I don't think it passes. I don't think the PUD is approved. It would have been a two-to-two vote, you know? Well, it might have been.
I guarantee it was.
So anyway, long story short, it did pass. And these guys, they've invested a lot of money and they, they're, they've done a lot, ton of work down there. I'm telling you, I see it every day. And, and, and it, it's not exactly what I would want. But I think it's a, it's a compromise and I think it's a win. So that's, that's where I'm at.
Anyone else?
All right. So what's, so what's the wishes of the board in reference to, uh, moving forward? I would just add, I just, I would hate to, uh, just to say, tell them, tell them no after they done put in so much in. And going from 100 down to 80, it's, it's just hard for me to just say, tell them no at this time. So what's the wishes of the board? Well, I, I'll tell you what, and it's in my district. So it's actually part of my district. So I'll pass it, but I'll pass the chair along to, to Commissioner Macron, which is the vice chair, and I'll make the motion. So I'm going to pass the chair along to you, Commissioner Macron. And I, I'll make the motion to approve it, uh, the PDR recommendation to approve.
Chairman passes the chair and have, I have a motion from Commissioner Quinn for this, for this change in the development. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second from Commissioner Priggin. I need to go to the public. Anybody from the public?
There's a couple of things that I'm going to ask the developer. I'm glad that there's more perfect service in the yard. I think that's going to be crucial. There is a concern that I have, and that is the amount of dirt. I saw go on that property to build that property up. And if you look at our health department, which is right next door, a little concerned about future storms if they're going to end up flooded out. Also, a little curious about underneath the ground, the pipes, the infrastructure that went in. Does it matter if did the pipes go in for townhomes? Or did they go in for single-family homes? And is there a difference in pipes, what goes underground with respect to comparing townhomes to, even though you've lowered the density from 100 to 80? So I'd like the developer to kind of talk about that and talk about what they're going to do to mitigate potential flooding to the health department because they've built up the property so high. I think that's something else we have to look at, not just the county, but the city. Because I keep seeing this over and over and over again. And what you're creating is drainage problems for the neighbor. And you're not allowed to divert your water onto the neighbor's property.
Yeah, before, before you speak.
Yeah, before, before you speak, Michael, um, so I, I wanted to, I'm glad you asked that question because I, I think that's, is it, is, it's not legal to, you, you'll, you'll run off on somebody else.
So, so again, I, I let Doug answer. I think this was designed to the 100-year event. So I mean, it's, it's, so it's, it's well over. The, the thing too, that I think we have to get back to, and it'll be a, a discussion maybe right after this one, is this. This came up again, a year plus ago. City wanted annexes, and they told them they'd give them 500 and something units on this piece of property. Okay? And, and so just think about that for a minute. Okay, so we were talking about 500 units or 100 units, and now we're down to 80. So the, the amount of stormwater is a, a small fraction of, of that. But yes, they are required by law. They're required to, for a lesser standard, and again, I'd have to let an engineer determine that, but, but, uh, I believe they're only required for, they're not required for 100 on this, but they did a 100-year event. So, uh, I think staff's comfortable with the, with the stormwater. What I'm not comfortable with is this, is the city's plan, because again, a lot more density and no stormwater. Just look at every time it rains. So I think we're gonna be fine here on, on the stormwater side. In fact, it's gonna be probably the, the best thing on Garrison Avenue, stormwater-wise.
Are we, are we inspecting these? Is this, this is our inspections?
As far as the development itself, I mean, well, this, we're at a totally different level of basically developing the lots and building the homes. I mean-
Reason I'm saying is, is, is if I know that we're watching it, I, I don't think her problems or questions are gonna be, they're addressed by our inspectors. That's why I was trying to say.
And Grant, you said 68 are in the county, 68?
Yes, and so to address that, I mean, I'm not an engineer, and our engineer actually had a family emergency, but I've been in quite a few of these. What it's, my understanding is that we always have to do a pre and a post engineering. So you just have to look at what were three, uh, listing conditions and what are the posts. And you have to do that calculation based on the complete build-out. So they take into account when doing the stormwater, what they're gonna, you know, what all the impact, the driveways, the houses, everything you're gonna have on the, the site and all site. And then to address, uh, on the piping, yes, we'll have to go back and go through, uh, the engineering and make sure that all the engineering, like, for example, you know, a lot of the, the curving situation where the way that they were under the sidewalks and townhomes all being so close together, uh, we were having to do a certain, certain kind of curving. And so now the engineers looking at that, uh, address to make sure that everything would will meet, uh, you know, the 80, to address that are the single family versus the townhomes. So we certainly taking that into account.
Commissioner, to answer your question on the inspection, so we will take their inspectors' data, and before we accept the subdivision and the, and the roads, our engineer has to check their data and, and confirm that it's correct.
So that, that will, that will address the-
Correct.
So like, the chairman won't sign my plat, like, at the end of it, we'll come back and we build this subdivision, we put all the stormwater, we put all the roads, everything in there. We'll have to turn in ass builds and we'll have to get a plat. And then you guys will not, uh, you know, sign off, the chairman won't sign off on the plat. I'm assuming that Mr. Smallwood will come out or whoever, Mr. Mark, or, and come out and say, look, this is, and we'll submit the ass builds with the set of drawings. And then once that meets, you know, they're, you know, identical, then they, then you'll sign off on it. But you won't sign off if we go out there and it shows a stormwater pond and there's no stormwater pond there, obviously you're not gonna sign it. Chairman or staff's not allowed to sign.
So, so we're not worried about any stormwater, man, put on the, the, uh-
Stormwater's on there, a lot of it.
We're, we're running to, uh, the health department.
That's right. Yes, we, we pre and post, we looked at it, hey, what was the existing conditions out there? Well, now we're just 44 acres or 38 acres is what we have in this one, 38 acres. What, what was it doing to the health department? And now if you go out there and put 100 townhomes on it, what would it do to the, uh, to the health department? And we took that, uh, into consideration in the unit they designed.
Okay.
People were a lot smarter than me.
I got you, got you. All right, thanks. You still got?
Yeah, anybody else from the public?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Anything, anything else from the board? Chairman, I have to abstain on the project, did a work on the project. Okay. Uh, motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed?
I'm opposed.
Three to one vote with one abstention. So I'll pass the chair back.
All right, thank you, sir.
So, Mr. Chairman, real quick beforehand, so I, I think it is timely to, to have this discussion, and it probably needs to be a workshop. And, and again, I think there's a, there's a lot of moving parts and, and staff is all ears. We're all ears to being, I've, I've always believed in one book, one set of rules. But, but again, we also have to look at the, the, the one, new state law, but the other is the elephant in the room. We had two PUDs in the last year, okay? One on Highway 98 and this one right here. They both came because we were trying to prevent an explosion of density by the city annexed them. So we have to have a plan if we're gonna be in a constant peeing contest with the city on annexation. And they tell them that you can get from seven to 40 units an acre, and we're saying two to four units an acre. We, there, we, we have to have some ammunition to go into battle. If not, we're gonna lose every one of these. And again, when it's not creating an enclave and when it's, when it's contiguous. It doesn't get any more contiguous than this because part of the subdivisions in the city. Again, the majority of it's in the county, but, uh, the, so going forward, I would love to sit down and have a, we're probably gonna need two or three hours to go through, again, some of the questions that Commissioner Mclemore brought up, some of the questions Commissioner Priggin brought up. You, you can, you can do what you think is right, and we still losing in. I think this turned out as good as it could have possibly turned out, because if we had not done it this way, you would've had a lot more density and a lot less control and more problems. So I don't know, we've, we've probably run out of time, but maybe sometime in October, it would be a good time to have a workshop and, and again, involve the PDRB, involve the planning department, involve the building department, and, uh, let's, let's lay our cards on the table and, and come up with a plan moving forward.
Follow up with the, the Florida Association of the Counties, their, their, this, it just went in, they put it under a FEMA bill. Very, very smart how they did that. They put it under the FEMA, so you wouldn't really look at your building stuff in there when it appears. But there's already litigation in three counties, Alachua's in it right now over this, and, uh, because they wanted to, you know, kind of limit their growth because their infrastructure in a certain area of Alachua County wasn't working right. So they said, hey, we need to limit growth right here. We can't, until we get caught up. And according to this, they're in a lawsuit on it. And it goes all the way to, to the governor's office. Governor's talking about removing commissioners from their seats over this. And so they're, and they're huddling because it's brand new. We don't know how it's turned out. They're already looking at this year's legislation to be on the priority, because it basically takes home rule away from local governments. And it doesn't allow you to do, hey, we got a population explosion, we need to slow this down. Doesn't allow you to do that. So I just wanted to add that to that. When we had this meeting, we need to really watch what they're saying in the legislature about this, because if we go more restrictive on anything we do, according to what they're saying, it could come back and bite us. And, uh, so we got a pretty good one right now, but we need to, like we said with the PUDs, it throws everything out. So that's just my take on it.
All right, Mr. Hus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to add what Michael was saying.